Put your fans on the microphone.
Yes, Wendy Berger from the Chrome of Cold Shots here from the applicant. At the conclusion of last month's meeting when everyone was a bit tired, there were still two more residents of the public that were including Mr. Powers and Diane McFarlane, according to the record. So I will sit to the side and let the residents, those two residents, put through.
Right. Mr. Powers was in the middle of his comments. And then there is Diane McFarlane, or Miss McFarlane, Farley, I'm sorry, Miss McFarley. She's here tonight.
Diane.
Oh, that's you, okay. So you're next, and that's basically it. Mr. Powers, I think maybe you should sit down.
I was just gonna say that. You wanna sit down with the problem?
I'll go right up here. Mr. Powell?
Yeah. It's tight in here.
Please be quiet in the audience.
Mr. Powers, good evening. I suggest we swear in just in case you must or straighten some testimony and explain some of the things you have. So if you don't mind, you raise your right hand. You solemnly swear upon any testimony offered to see what you would say for the whole truth and what you love and you say what you got. And if you separate your foreman and spell your last name.
Powers, Powers, 1374 town lane, Tina.
Use my.
Mr. Powers, even though you get a chance to continue here tonight, please don't, please try to make your comments something nouveau, something new that you didn't say last time because you spent quite a long time, which is fine, I have no problem with that, just don't repeat yourself because it's already on the record. And I see you're fighting with a microphone. Maybe all your friends at town council, maybe you can ask them to buy us a better PA system.
They said they have no problem, it's only us.
Oh, it's only us, yeah, okay, fine.
Let me just begin by a couple of procedural questions not raised last time. I'm not clear on whether or not...
This is what, your comments, right, Mr. Powers?
My comments.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm not clear whether or not MLUL 48, 1 through 4 has been met by this applicant. As you, I'm sure, know, any owner of a corporation who is applying before Board of adjustment must provide the names of anyone who has more than 10%. And when I opred that, what I got back was the application. And the application itself does list three members, but I have no idea whether or not they are the only people who have a 10% membership or, because that is not actually specified in their application. And I'm concerned about that because that actually, if you take a look at 48.3, you will see that that is something that the Board of adjustment must have prior to approving any application. The second point I want to raise is I'm not clear, because I am again opred issues associated with the amendment that was made at your suggestion, Mr. Chair, about the 25 additional spaces. And I want to just read a bit from the 620 testimony in which Ms. Berger, when you asked her whether or not they were included in 25 additional spots, said, "No, because as we discussed, it's our opinion, our expert's opinion, those spaces are not needed and it would not be a good planning and good zoning to increase the size of that parking deck due to the fact it would then go to the property line. We would have a large wall around the back, which they think, we think would have a detrimental impact on the neighbors." I don't believe issues associated with that were actually ever addressed subsequent to whatever it is that was going on with the only amendment that I know that you folks have actually received was a letter dated from the architect on the 21st of August, and it specified three options. If you have some other amendment that actually clarifies that, that would be useful. I also want to bring to everyone's attention something you said, Mr. Chair, that is concerning to me. It says, "I understand what you're saying, I'm not just sure if someone I should say, if they should approve, if the board will approve this, I would like to see those 25 additional spaces. Everything else will be acceptable," you said. At least the way I see the balances that we have to look at, there will be a deficiency unless those 25 spaces were actually put in. I found that a concerning statement, Mr. Chair, because it was made before Mr. Leiden had come, we were close to completing his statement about how he was addressing the variances, which I'm going to be talking about tonight. As you know, the powers of this board are pretty well described in terms of what it is that must be done in order to meet the negative criteria of every variance. And in the process by which the public was actually asked to look at that question, you have heard a very clear statement from very many residents that they believe this approval of this would be indefinite for public. But I want to move on to the discussion that you've heard a little bit about, but I want to draw your particular attention to what Mr. Leiden said.
I agree.
And that actually addresses whether or not this application does in fact meet the master plan and therefore meet the criteria that the powers that you have to approve an application if it does not actually meet the zoning plan and the ordinance related to it. Most of his initial testimony was actually devoted from pages 115 to 148 on, in May 16th, that's a long time ago, to justify what he believed was actually the, he believed was actually the clear meaning of the master plan, which he claimed was to provide a justification that was consistent with the master plan, both in its 2007 forms, but also the 2011, 2014, and 2017. I'm not going to read at length again because you folks have already heard it several times. But as you know, Mr. Price, in addressing precisely that question, said that he did not believe that the high-rise buildings being proposed for the State Street area, of which this is one, actually were consistent with the master plan. The proposed development, the study area, is both substantially taller and more dense than the existing development within the State Street area, which is comprised predominantly of lower-rise residential apartments and one- and two-story retail mixed-use zoning. Most of those projects are smaller-scale buildings, he went on to say. Now, there are both disadvantages and advantages of having such buildings there, but at the same time, the scale and character of the State Street study area will be irreversibly transformed by the development of significantly more dense and tolerant multifamily residential development that was not contemplated by the township's current master plan or the reexamination reports, which are meant to guide development to the township. The cumulative impacts of the proposed development within the study area must be considered going forward.
Price, slow down a little bit.
Just a little slower. The cumulative impacts of the proposed development within the study area must be considered going forward. As such, if development of this type is going to be permitted in the future, and this application is something in the future, it merits a reexamination of the master plan policies and the zoning for the State Street area to determine whether such development is appropriate and is designed in such a manner as to ensure that it is sensitive to and compatible with existing development to which it is adjacent, as well as the neighborhood of which it's a part. You have heard many of the residents echo that concern, but it clearly stands in state juxtaposition to what it was that Mr. Leiden was telling you about the master plan and therefore issues associated with the negative criteria questions at the very least. And Mr. Leiden actually went on in his discussion of why he thought things were consistent and why in fact the township had not actually gone ahead and developed a ordinance which would not have required him to have had to make such, justify such very large variances by suggesting that the planning board and the council simply had not had time. And I want to direct your attention to two things about those statements from Mr. Leiden. The planning board does not plan to change the master plan, in respect to that. In fact, the team that planning board attorney on the master plan parameters is actually a YouTube in which the planning board attorney on the 29th of September did it very clear that he did not think that that was actually something that had been overlooked and therefore required new zoning. So therefore, the current zoning would have continued to apply. And in fact, the mayor told, since Mr. Leiden kept on pointing out that the council was going along with that way of thinking newly about the 100 area, he said, he told the audience of 200 in the town hall recently, you can find this on YouTube, Governor Murphy holds Tina call at 112 with a video, and he said, "We are still at nine units per acre." Mr. Leiden's suggestion that the only reason that that had not been changed was it had been overlooked and the council and the planning board had not had time, it appears that in fact, although Mr. Price says you would have to change the master plan in order to go forward with these new applications, it now appears that neither the mayor nor the planning board are planning to go through that change. They don't think, as Mr. Leiden said, you should think, that in fact something had to be done to change it. And so therefore, it seems to me that is an important issue to keep in mind as you try to figure out this exactly what's going on with this. I want to go ahead now and focus on something that is absolutely directly related to what I've just been saying, but that does focus specifically on the negative criteria issues. In the May 16th transcript at page 145, line 23, Mr. Leiden says, "At some point in my testimony, I'm going to have to get to the negative criteria." And one of the things I want to point out is that we will not be overtaxing the school district. That was his single example about how to handle all 12 variances that are going to be associated with this.
What page was that, Mr. Powell?
Yes, page 145, line 23. Then on the June 20th transcript at page 10, lines 14 to 16, citing some legal cases, Mr. Leiden said, "They basically asked you to show how the site can still function even though you are seeking variances. I think we can meet that burden." Then of course, this is important, then of course, you always have to show the negative criteria for every single variance. What was sort of amazing about that was when I asked Mr. Leiden whether or not he had in fact provided exactly that level of assurance, he said something very interesting, and I will read directly from the transcript of 95, which I said, page 10, line 15 and 16, which I just bet to you.
Hold on, 95.
Page 10, line 15 and 16. And Ms. Berger asked, "Which state?"
One second, one second.
Page 10, line 15 and 16. Again, we're back at the, what I just bet to you from the June transcript. I said, I say, "Page, this is 620, page 10, lines 15, 16." You are characterizing the variances and then...
One second. September 5, 2019, what page?
Page 139.
139.
This is my testimony.
139.
Page 10, line 15 and 16. Which state?
What page, line 10?
No, he's referring to the... Page 10, line 15 and 16.
Oh, Dr. Powers says the following.
Yeah.
Okay.
You are characterizing...
Why don't you read in the context? It doesn't make sense what you're trying to read.
I'm trying to show you that Mr. Leiden claimed that he had in fact covered all the variances, and I'm trying to show you that he did not do.
So why don't start with a question that makes sense so you get a proper passage of...
Well, in fact, because Ms. Berger had objected to the characterization of how I handled it, so if you want me to go back, I can read that whole thing and that. The issue that I'm addressing is, I'm asking Mr. Leiden whether or not he has, "You are characterizing the variances and then you say, 'Of course, you always have to show the negative criteria for every variance.'" Mr. Leiden, does your testimony in any way provide us with negative criteria? He said yes. Do you believe it does? He said yes. I said, "Is it true that the only two variances to which your testimony refers are height and density?" And he said, "I don't believe that that is true." So how would one actually go out figuring out whether or not you folks had had a justification of the negative criteria given to you for the 12 variances? Well, a very good way to do that would be to go through the process of looking at where negative criteria were actually addressed in Mr. Leiden's testimony. And I've actually done that pretty consistently. He cites, he says, at one point, this answer to why the negative criteria met is to say that both 11475 and 1400 State Street, even though that's not built, there is an approval of it, and shows that the 100 State Street project is consistent, that... But what we actually should know about that, folks, is that your approval of that 140 State Street does now expire. So he was referring to something that no longer exists, and how that actually helps on the negative criteria, I am not at all clear about. When they are specific to this, I'm really quite clear. Let me just remind you of what it is that you folks are being asked to approve tonight. It looks like this. That's not each one of them, but in each case, you are looking at what this ordinance is and what it is you're being asked to approve. I don't know if you'd like to see this more, I can have several more copies if you want to see this. But in each case, it's a dramatic difference from what it is that the zone calls for, and which the mayor has just said he's happy to live with, and which the planning board has just said is not, as Mr. Leiden predicted, you wouldn't, going to be able to change. But you need a negative criteria justification for not just these, but for every one of them. And so I've gone looking to see whether or not Mr. Leiden ever provided what it is that you're talking about. He does say on line, on page 26 of the June 20th transcript at line 20, he says, "It shows that those other buildings show compatible with existing patterns of development," thereby directly contradicting what Mr. Price just said about the other properties in that area. And so all those all go to the negative criteria. I just heard Mr. Price said, "That isn't true," and he just said, "That goes to the negative criteria." I guess I'll find that sort of coverage thereof. On page 26, line 22, he tries and suggests that somehow articulation for lighting and for air, I think those also go to the negative criteria. Trying to help me understand why a zero backlot or inadequate side lot, or 68 units instead of nine, actually is actually handled by the fact that you have, in his view, in this building, articulation for lighting and for air. Let's go to line 54. And this is unbelievably important because here, your town planner questions whether or not what has been provided as justification to you for the variances that Mr. Leiden told you he must provide justification for. And Ms. Laney, speaking for the planners, who then goes right to the issue, says, "The council has not rezoned or made any recommendations. They are in zone." So how do you address the negative criteria, she asks? How do you reconcile what you're proposing with the fact that the zoning doesn't permit and the master plan doesn't recommend it? Wow. Mr. Leiden's response is again typically unresponsive. He cites the approval of the 1600 River Road zone and says that the fact that there was a resolution that went through the council that seemed to be interested in whether or not to put 44 parking spaces across the street is a justification for saying that the council is fully on board with it. But in fact, if you read that resolution, what you find is, it says, "We're not making any judgment about whether or not that's a good thing. We're simply telling you that the Board of Adjustment proves that we would be okay with actually having that city property paid and striped." I could read that more specifically if you're interested in that. And so a direct examination of Leiden, Libis Leibert, in that same timeframe on page 178 of the 620, sorry, of the, that was actually the August version. Ms. Leibert says, "What is his job?"
Hold on, hold it.
Let me get that out for you specifically. Yes, please. Everybody had gotten lost in all those things, and all the stuff up here. But I want to simply make the more general point about this, that the question came up about just exactly what's going on. And Mr. Leiden, you asked, you said, in respect to the question that Ms. Leibert was saying, "What is this man, what is his job?" They are proffering him as an expert on planning and the zoning and zoning laws. And Ms. Leibert says, "Right." And then the chair continues, "That means how the impact of zoning according to zone laws, positive and negative criteria, and technically as to what zoning is allowed in this area. I have just rendered to you a complete and total description of everything that Mr. Leiden ever told you about negative criteria. Remember, he had begun by telling you that it was his responsibility with his testimony, and his was the only testimony that talked about variances. He was going to give you the justification for every single variance. And rather than doing what Mr. Burgess did for you recently in trying to figure out what to do about the Myerac application, he took you through every one of the variances and explained how the negative criteria will map. You don't have any testimony, folks, that would justify those variances, and I believe you don't even have for the ones related, which he claimed to have, in terms of both density and height, but you certainly don't have it in relation to 10. And so therefore, you don't have what you need to approve this application tonight. Thank you very much."
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Okay, please.
Actually, sorry, I have some questions for...
That was one.
So, you know, I've also gone through the impact study that you referenced. And, you know, while I agree with, you know, the points that you mentioned that, you know, that are talked about, I'm not sure that it's that black and white, right? I think the impact study makes a point, you know, to talk about, it says, for instance, "The new development will generate new residents and thus more customers for nearby stores, potentially spurring the revitalization of neighborhood retail areas. It will diversify the housing stock and generate housing for low and moderate income households, as evidenced by fiscal impact analysis, it will generate a substantial tax revenue."
Does that, in your mind, go to Mr. Zombick? You gotta show it. Please. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, so, because as part of this, I'm trying, you know, because I understand that most of...
Is it your testimony that doesn't like it, or mine? That's why I don't touch the face. Mics and fans, that's what you...
So, you know, because what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to figure out the, looking at, I want to look at the detrimental impact, right, and determine whether or not, you know, the impact it will have on single-family residents, which is one of the objectives in the master plan. And as I go through, you know, so for me, I'm trying to figure out, okay, well, what is it that would be considered a detrimental impact, right? Is a multifamily residence on its face, per se, a detrimental impact? I don't think so. And the reason is, the master plan talks about multifamily residents, right, and it says that they don't recommend it because of the parking issue, right? It says, you know, parking comes out to roughly $20,000 to $30,000 a space, and the applications that were before the board at the time were providing either zero or one space. And they said, you know, they don't recommend these types of developments, but had they wanted to, they could have said, you know, they made a point to say that, or the master plan made a point to say that they don't recommend these developments until the parking issue is looked at, right, or taken care of. They could very easily have said, you know, "We don't recommend these developments because they are against the master plan because they have a detrimental impact on single-family residents." But they didn't say that. So I look at the parking as something to, you know, to look at, right?
The places where they're very, much closer by virtue of particularly the 25 additional spaces, to not having to require a variance whatsoever, isn't in relationship to parking. But...
Right.
But that, why does that become...
No, no, I'm just trying to, because you brought up the, you brought up the impact study as if it was kind of, you know, the smoking gun, right? And if you go through the impact study, it, you know, it goes through things that I would consider would be, you know, would be important, right? Will this have an impact on policing? Will it have an impact on the ambulance? Will it have an impact on waste? And it goes through, will it have an impact on schools? And it goes through all of that very clearly, the same impact study, and it says it doesn't have an impact on any of those, except maybe recycling, right? So, I mean, these are factors, it's not as clear-cut as I think you want to present it as?
I didn't actually go into an evaluation of what might be the positive criteria. I will simply cite the fact that in his own direct statement in respect of adding to additional property proposals of this sort, he said, "That should await a change in the master plan because he found it inconsistent." But that, in fact, would he reversively change the character of the town?
Who's he?
And that's...
Who's he?
He is Mr. Price. It's the price quoted directly from the impact. And so, but, so I carefully began my discussion about sort of where the master plan sat. And I also picked up what Ms. Laney told you about what the master plan said. And she very specifically, when she got to the question of whether or not Mr. Leiden had passed what he needed to in respect of the negative criteria for each and every variance, she said, "Where is it?" And when I asked the question, "Have you actually provided that, Mr. Leiden?", he said, "Yes." And I said, "Have you provided for more than two?" He said, "I think so." He said, "I think so." Then I've gone looking. I've gone through the whole transcript. For at least 10 of the variances, he never even gets close to it. And for the other two variances, it seems to me very unclear that you now have a justification for either the height, because one of the things that Mr. Price and Ms. Lanning are interested in is the fact that the height variances are really quite extraordinary. That's what those maps, those diagrams are about. And in terms of the number of units per. Biden said, "Oh, that's just because the planning board and the council haven't gotten around to it." And I just proved to you tonight that neither the master plan has intended to address that, nor does the mayor anyhow, in speaking to 200 people in front of the governor, think that more than nine is going to be required. My point is, you've got, your job is to figure out whether or not that Mr. Melphy has found in this application, which have these, which are, you know, I'll show you that thing again, but every one of those graphs show you how dramatically out of scale what you're being asked to pass. And you must meet for every one of them, according to Mr. Biden, rightly, a negative criteria. And he hasn't provided word one in respect of most of them. Well, you want to go to the global issue, that's fine. I'm focusing on what his job was in respect of the specific 12 variances. I don't think he made it, even the two, he certainly didn't even address the 10.
Thank you very much, Mr. Powell.
All right, Mr. McFarlane? Please come up. Just take your name and address from there.
My name is Diane McFarlane. D I A H A N N, N C A W, L A, in the residential 210, I remain in Teneque.
You guys speak a little closer to the mic, much, much closer than you really like to. And then our train's going to sway you in.
If you don't mind raising your right hand, do you solemnly swear upon any testament on me you might give this evening as opposed to question, is the truth, the high truth, and nothing above the truth? Wonderful, welcome this evening.
Thank you. Okay, I want to start then?
Can everybody here in the back?
Can you hear me?
No.
Almost kissing. Mr. Rose.
I was, I am a lifetime resident of Teneque. I moved here when I was probably one or two months old, and I have 55. I, I'm concerned. I'm concerned about the future of Teneque. I've read the master plan and I see what's going on around State Street, around Teneque. And I think growth is needed. But I think to the extent what is being proposed is a bit much. I ride, I'm a triathlete. I ride and I bike in those areas. And I'm concerned about the increase of traffic that will be going, going on, cars coming in. And so, you know, and I run these streets, I bike these streets. You know, so they're part of my training, training group. And I'm concerned. I am very much concerned about, you know, what is going on and is it consistent, you know, with the master plan and, you know, in the future of Teneque? You know, being, living here for 55 years, you know, I am truly concerned in what will I leave for my children and my grandchildren to come? And will they be safe, you know, just walking down the street? I know my parents moved here 55, 56 years ago. And they moved here because they knew, they moved from New York City and they wanted to raise their kids in a town, not a city. Otherwise, they could have stayed in the city and flourished in the cities well. But they came here to Teneque because Teneque offered great opportunity for everyone. And to see the massive changes, you know, is really concerning to me. I frequent that area even on Sundays. Sundays, there's no parking. And that's just on a Sunday. You know, after church, we go and to support, you know, the businesses along the plaza. But this is, this is really too much. And just to see, you know, Teneque go down this road like other areas, you know. I don't, I don't want to live in Fort Lee where you see massive expansion going on. I don't want, I want to stay in Teneque. I want it still to be a town that I could raise, you know, my grandchildren would be welcome to come and to be raised. And to have this type of development, I think is just, you know, I think it's a shame. I really think it's a shame that, you know, I'm, you know, I'm not talking just about, you know, our property value is going to go down. Who knows? Who knows? With this type of residential construction, who knows? Therefore, you know, the value of property goes down as well. But I think Teneque is a really nice place to raise a family and to go through the educational system. But these kinds of changes, you know, I would, I would tell you, I would be afraid to start, you know, to continue biking and running along, you know, this is my racecock. This is where I, this is where I train. This is where I trained for the New York City Marathon. And I just? No, no. I qualified for next year, but, you know, as? Thank you. Thank you. But, you know, but like I said, you know, this is, this is my training ground. You know, boat to park, going down the plaza, getting something to eat on a long run or a long, you know, bike, a bike tour. But I would be really, I would be really sad to see things change the way they seem to be going now. And I don't think this adds to Teneque. Doesn't really, you know, from my perspective, it doesn't really add. But, and I know I can speak for my father, who's an audience and he's probably, he's been a resident longer than I have. And, you know, and he frequents these areas. I can't see him feel safe, you know, walking in the plaza area and I have to worry about, you know, you know, the extra traffic. So, that's all I have to say, you know.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, and this concludes really the comments as to 100 State Street. Now, I know there's some members who want to, number one, hear the summation. And I think, Ms. Berger, you wanted to sum up next at the December 5 meeting. Can we get a waiver to carry this matter?
Yes.
Okay. And there's some members who will have a way in. We want to make sure that there's plenty of members that would be here for the vote.
Please be quiet in the audience.
So we're going to carry this matter to 12:5, 7 o'clock, soon thereafter in these chambers without further notice to the public. Have a motion, pick the margin. Second, Mr. Mermlstein. Want to favor to carry this matter?
Aye.
Any opposing? So this matter will be carried for the summation and a vote, hopefully a vote, on December 5, 2019, 7 o'clock in these chambers.
You then have the chance.